And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Dennis. We appreciate you being here. You bet. Next item on our force this morning is to convene a Mesa City Council study session. The first item on that agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on updated parks bond allocations. So we welcome Mr. Hirschberg. I do have a couple of requests to speak on this topic from the public, and one of them at least says, "I'm not sure if I'm for it or against it because I'm not sure what the information is." So I think maybe for all of our edification, we'll hear the presentation, and then I will invite the two folks who have indicated they're interested in speaking to come up, just so they have the benefit of having seen the presentation. So, Mr. Hirschberg, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Mark Hirschberg, Director of Parks Recreation and Commercial Facilities. In June, we provided you an update on reallocating some bond dollars from projects where we either had trouble acquiring the property, or the community, as we continue to work with them, asked for a decrease in the scope of services and change in those original park plans that we had proposed through the bond. To follow that up, you asked us to come back and provide some more follow-up with some specific numbers for project costs and where we were at, and an update on schedules and completion dates and everything else. So, jump into that. Again, just as a reminder, in November 2012, the voters approved the $70 million Parks and Recreation Bond Package. The program focused on five areas: Park Conversion and Improvement Projects, Community Partnership Projects, Renovation and Enhancement Projects, New Development Park Projects, and the Bike and Pedestrian Path Projects. So, we've always kept everything through these presentations consistently in those categories, so I've done the same today as well. Starting with the Park Conversion and Improvement Projects. Desert Trails Park out at McDall and Wrecker was completed in November 2014 at a cost of $960,000. Mariposa Park at Medina and Haas was completed in March of 2015 at a cost of $850,000. Desert Royal Park at McKellupson Ellsworth is actually open to the public now, we'll dedicate that on September 9th, though, and that came in at $2.285 million. Signal Buten Elliott Design is scheduled to commence in fiscal year 1718 to coincide with the water treatment facility out there. The original budget for that project was $3.4 million. We've had to reduce the cost of that project to cover impact fees. There's a change in legislation after the bond package passed that required us to come back and pay those costs of those impact fees. So, that project was the one that was furthest out in the schedule, so we decided to go back and use the funds from that project to cover the impact fees and those, and then hopefully savings along the way from other projects would make up the difference, and we could add more money towards that project once we continue to work on it. At the time, there was also a small increase in expenses at Mariposa Park. Before, Councilmember Thompson was on with his predecessor, we worked with Councilmember Summers to reallocate that funding from those funds to help cover the additional $100,000 at Mariposa Park. So again, in the bond program, when we proposed it, the original cost for this category was $7.25 million. As of today, those revised costs are $5,940,000. Community Partnership Projects, these are projects that were done or are being done in conjunction with Mesa Public Schools to convert school properties into parks and recreation facilities. Mesa Aquatics Complex was completed in May 2015 at a cost of $8 million. In the original bond package, we had proposed rebuilding Taylor Pool at its existing site with the infrastructure and everything there. As we started to work on those plans, the community came together, asked us to work cooperatively with Mesa Public Schools to relocate that, to relocate the facility to the Mesa High School campus. To do that, because the infrastructure, we had to reinstall sewer and everything else at the corner of Southern and Harris for that property. We had to take some money, $3 million, from Pioneer Park and move that towards this facility to cover those costs to make that facility possible. Great investment, was extremely popular this summer. We reached capacity several times, had lines out the door, and tremendous response from the community. Again, that was our first addition in our aquatics inventory of a lazy river, so great amenity and proved to be a true success, so. The Fiesta Sports Project is the fields at the Mesa Education Center or the former Powell Junior High. This property transfer was completed last month, and we are scheduled to begin construction in January 2016. The original budget was $5.2 million. In June, we recommended adding an additional $100,000 in those savings from those other projects to include a playground at this site, so the revised budget for that project is $5.3 million. Eagles Park, the former Mesa Junior High property. That property is in escrow. We should, if all goes well, have closing on September 28th. As a reminder, on this one, with the original grant funds or budget funds in the bond program are $3.5 million, we have, we're using additional federal dollars to the tune of $3 million. So we've required to go through the federal process on building that project, so we've had to do an ARC survey and go through the state historical preservation and everything else. So we're waiting for the comment period to close before we can actually move on the final closing and transfer the property. So hopefully, that'll close on September 28th, and then we can finish final design on that. Again, the construction on that, as we've said before, is contingent on the operations and maintenance budget being available in the general fund to bring that on. So the original budget for this, in the original bond program, was $13,700,000 with the revised cost of $16,800,000, which is reflective of the $100,000 from savings towards Fiesta and the additional $3 million in federal dollars for Eagles Park. The renovation and enhancement projects, renovating existing parks within the system. Pioneer Park, again, as I mentioned, we originally had a $6 million budget there, reduced that to $3 million to help with the Mesa Aquatics Complex. We've received some CDBG dollars to reallocate towards that project, as well as, originally in June, I had come to, I had recommended that we add lighting to the baseball fields at Riverview Park. As I've continued to work with that with our staff and penciled that out, that is not proving to make economic sense. So what we're recommending is taking the $1,450,000 that we had originally proposed there and moving that to Pioneer Park to get us closer to the original park budget of $6 million, where we would be at $5,450,000 for that. Again, while we're already providing maintenance at that location, we did call for a splash pad at that park, which would cause an increase in maintenance costs there, so there is an incremental cost, and again, those dollars are not available in the operating budget as of today, so construction on those would be contingent on those dollars being available. Riverview Park, the original project budget through the Cub Spring Training Project had money in it for the original level of service. The bond program called for changing that park to a regional showcase park, which I think we've been successful in doing. That came at a cost of $9.3 million, but it's continued to be one of the premier destination parks in the valley, where the playground was named one of the top 50 in the United States, and we continue to see an average daily visit there of about 1,500 people a day. Kleinman Park, design will start in summer of 2016. The original project budget was $3,500,000. As we've continued to work with the community and Councilmember Glover, they've asked for a reduction in scope from what was originally proposed, so there's a savings there, and those dollars, again, as we've talked about, have been reallocated. We will still make some significant improvements at the park, including shade over the playground, reconstruction of four tennis courts, replacement of the ball field fencing, as well as some other minor improvements to the park system.
I like the way it runs.
In that same category, the Museum and Cultural Resources, the federal building, this was slated for expansion design of that museum space. As they continue to work on their scope and their design budget, the original budget was $3 million. That scope has grown to $5,740,000 with a new revised budget there. The Greenfield Park Urban Fishing Lake, again, design is to commence later this year. The original budget was $2.5 million there with a revised budget of $3.5 million, just for the increased construction costs that we're seeing in some of these projects. And again, as I mentioned, we'll start design later this year, but construction is again contingent on the operations and maintenance budget being available in the general fund. Existing park improvements-
Excuse me, Mr. Hirschberg, we have a quick question for you.
What happened at the museum that made that budget? I mean, we blew past an original number pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And by more than double. I mean, that was-
As I've done-
It was a little sticker shock when I saw it the first time. I was like, wow, you know, but I don't know kind of what happened. How did we get there?
Yeah, as I've done in the past, I always ask Beth to come up and help me with this one, because I've stepped into the park side of it.
Always links back to engineering, oh.
Well, originally, this part, this project was only budgeted to do some basic improvements on the inside of the building. Since then, the museum has indicated they would like to have external improvements, kind of spruce up the exterior of the building and make it so that it's visible and acknowledged as being a museum and its role. And then in addition, this includes about $1 million in exhibits for the interior of the museum. Those were never included in the original budget. So there were some scope changes, along with that, you know, the just the continued things we're experiencing with the cost of construction today.
Yes, Mr. Kavanagh.
And again, just a clarification, this expansion, this is a shared project, isn't it, between the Arizona Museum of Natural History and Mesa Historical Museum? In terms of use of space with rebuilding-
Oh, the storage, yeah.
The storage in the bottom, yes, yes, sorry.
They're using a storage today, but they'll continue, I think we're moving them down the basement.
They're gonna have the basement. Tom will have the basement for his storage and some of his exhibit preparation.
Right, thank you.
But, let me understand how that, kind of those costs get allocated, is-
No, there really isn't-
Is it a storage project that's on the budget, or is it-
No, Mayor, Council, the, I mean, currently today, and for I don't know how many years, I mean, the Natural History Museum continues to use and uses the federal building for storage today.
Right.
You can go there and find any kind of South Arizona cattle brand you ever wanted to see.
Yes, you can. It's pretty interesting.
Other things, so, but no, so that doesn't, that's not really changing. We're just really just moving it out of the main floors and I think kind of allocating it down to the basement, so.
Just kind of centralizing his operations in the basement and doing some storage facilities down there for him, bringing things up to code and making it a more workable and usable space.
So is that work happening now, or is that within the scope of this proposed project?
It's within the scope of the current budget that you see here. We haven't started work on that. Really, when you go to start work on that building, we need to do it all at once, otherwise it becomes quite costly. So we've held off starting the work for the Natural History Museum.
So what's that hangup going forward? Is there, I mean, are we gonna redo the project to meet with the original budget that we have, or we found magic pot of money to put, to expand this project?
So-
Sorry, am I poking something I shouldn't poke?
No, I think, this is, I think that's why we were asked to come back to the council, have these discussions. So, as you can see, there's a little bit of dynamic shifts where there's some projects, for example, Pioneer Park, that started out at a budget of $6 million, and then really working with Councilmember Fenter at the time, and really the neighborhoods, and trying to meet their priorities of the aquatic center. So we move money around to adjust for that, and I think that's been a great success. And so then, you know, we've also had the dynamics of the Buckhorn Bass project, and where we just couldn't come to a conclusion with the property owner. So that project, those dollars became available. And I'm giving just a few examples, those are kind of the bigger, I guess, amounts. So really, what we're coming to council today is trying to propose, where would, where's the best place to kind of reallocate those dollars? You know, so we have, you know, we've tried to go back, and I think what we're trying to is get back to restoring the Pioneer Park dollars. We're trying to, we, Councilmember Glover's worked with the neighborhood at Kleinman and adjusting the scope of work there, and, but also really seeing opportunities at Mesa Junior High. So, I know it's been, there's a lot of moving parts here, but I think ultimately, we're trying to present to the council, here's some opportunities. Obviously, we're still short at Pioneer Park. You know, there's the $3 million, the original $3 million for the museum, you know, how much more do we allocate to that? I think that's a question to the council. What are the other ones that are kind of in question now? Are those-
Those would be the two big ones.
Larger ones. I think the others, we've moved around. You saw the lighting issue, we've moved the dollars out of the lighting, of the Riverview Lighting.
Put that towards Pioneer.
Planning. I know I'm missing some, but I think those are kind of the larger decision points.
So there's some fiscal restraints that we have to kind of deal with. I don't want anybody to take my comments as being hostile towards that project at all. I mean, I get it. I've enjoyed the exhibits that the Historical Museum has put on over the years, and I kind of, but, yeah, okay, we'll have to make some tough decisions, it sounds like.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
The existing park improvements and enhancement projects, these were ball field lighting replacements, playground replacements, irrigation improvements, signage replacement, those have started to occur citywide and are, continue to be ongoing. Those were, are at a budget of $10,100,000. So again, the original cost for park conversion and improvement projects is $32,800. That was 800,000, was presented in the bond package. As of today, with some of those reallocations that we've talked about, we are at a revised cost of $35,390,000 of renovation enhancement projects, which I think is actually speaks volumes that council and the voters made a commitment to not just expand the park system, but focus on redeveloping and putting, investing dollars to update the existing park system. So, we continue to do that as well. The new park development projects, again, Mr. Brady covered the discussion on Buckhorn Bass. We did have small, $21,000 in expenses there for surveys, real estate expenses, as we went through that process. Monterey Park, two vacant parcels were required for future development and integration into the existing park. We had a budget of $5 million for that project, there's 1.4 million. There's actually three parcels that we tried to acquire, there's, we were able, as I mentioned, to acquire two. We don't, with that 1.4, we are not, don't have enough to fully develop that site, so we'll continue to work with Councilmember Thompson on the best way to master plan that site for future development. The Mesa City Center project, the design competition was held, and the winning design team is working on refining those concepts to bring back to council for future direct, for further direction. The original budget for that was $750,000, and there's still $610,700 remaining in that project. So, the original cost that was presented in the bond for this area was $10,750,000. The revised cost with those main, with those savings, basically with Buckhorn Bass coming out, is $5,770,000. Bike and Pedestrian Pass, I know that's your next presentation, so I'll save that for Lenny and his staff to cover, but we did make some slight adjustments. We received some federal dollars, and the increase in funding there from 5.5 million to 6.1 million is to cover the city's match portion of, to receive those federal dollars to expand those, to complete those projects. So again, just a few highlights. The $70 million was approved in November 2012. The first issuance came in May of 2013. Today, we've spent $35 million of that 70, and as, in addition to those projects that I highlighted that are either under design, or we have already completed, or will be opening within the next week or so, we've also replaced 160, 106 ball field light poles and light fixtures at 25 different fields throughout the city. We've replaced playgrounds at Porter, Vista Monterey, Pequeno, and Emerald Parks. We've done new surfacing at Augusta Ranch and Valencia Parks, and design is underway for new playgrounds at Gina Autry Park and Dobson Ranch Park. We've done irrigation improvements at Candlelight, Sherwood, and Gina Autry Parks, and are, have design underway for Carriage Lane, Harmony, Metal Green, Fitch, and Wood Glen Parks. We've established a new sign package for the park system, and you're starting to see those at some of these new sites, and now with approval of that contract on Monday, we've starting to move forward with implementing those.
Very proud of that work.
Hacienda Children's Hospital is located at 610 West Jerome Avenue. For more information, visit haciendahelcare.org.
Discuss and provide direction. So I think this is, it's important that we do that. First, I just want to point out that we have a great Parks and Recreation Program. Mr. Hirschberg has, as you know, each of the past couple of years, were finalists, top three for the best park and recreation program for cities of our size in the country. So it would be a mistake to not point that out at the outset here, and that we've recently spent 35 of 70 million ensuring that we have a really strong parks program and that we have great facilities. We've got great successes like the Mesa High Pool and others recently that are part of this, that, as Mr. Hirschberg indicated, are getting worn out, which is exactly what we want. People are lining up, and frankly, we're having to say, "Sorry, the pool's at capacity, you're gonna have to go to a different pool." So that's great, that's, that's success, I think. So, so that's the first thing I want to say, is, Mr. Hirschberg, thank you for having the best Parks and Recreation Program in the country for cities of our size. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've got now, just to prioritize, the good news is we had a $70 million park bond, the bad news is we had a $70 million park bond, because we needed a $170 million park bond to keep up with all the great ideas that people have for us in our community. So it's time to figure out what we do with the rest of the money. Mr. Thompson.
You know, we have the money sitting there to build parks, but on the O&amp;M side, we're still struggling. You know, we can't really build parks because we don't have the funds right now to maintain them, so, you know, I'm kind of torn on this. I mean, when are we anticipating our dollars to come back up on the O&amp;M side, so that we can actually afford to maintain the parks, not only that we have, but the ones that we want to build into the future?
Great question. We all look at you, Mr. Brady.
Well, based on the market performance over the last two weeks, that's, that's a great, I mean, that's right to the heart of the issue. We've tried to identify, the parks that we've built, we, you know, that are up and running, or that we're opening, we have the funding for it to do it. It's interesting with some of the parks, for example, Eagles Park, which would be brand new in its entirety to our system, that's a big, that's a big lift, because it's not something we maintained before. So it's something we have to, that has the greatest impact in our system, and so we have to watch that. A Pioneer Park, it's existed, it has a budget, a maintenance budget, and so that cost is more incremental because of the amenities, so it's not as large a difference, so it's probably, I think, about $100,000 more. And then, you know, we also kind of have to look at it, we believe that some of these projects, while we can't identify the funding right now, that because they may take, and they're never, never always anticipated they'd all come up at the same time, but a Pioneer Park may take 12 to 18 months to complete. You know, we think at some point in that 12 to 18 month, there'd be enough movement of a positive direction for revenues for the city that might be able to absorb it. But it's gonna be kind of one of those calls, we're gonna have to come to council almost on a, maybe every six months or so, as we monitor sales tax revenues and how things are going from the budget perspective, and where we can adjust our budgets. I don't, I don't know the answer, when it's gonna get better, I guess. We're optimistic it's gonna get a little better over the next year. It's, the question is how much, to what degree, that improvement, and will it be sufficient enough to absorb the cost? So, Mark, help me understand total, as far as operations and maintenance going, that we are needing going forward to identify, what does that growth number need to be? About a million?
On all those-
Everything, everything remaining.
About a million dollars.
About a million dollars. So that's what we'd have to see growth in the tax base. $100,000 for Pioneer Park is probably something we can absorb. A million dollars for all the parks, that's not something we could absorb in the budget without having to affect other current services, without having to reduce current services or to eliminate programs that we're already doing, and that doesn't seem like something we want to do. So, I don't have a very good answer, other than that's just something, we're anxious, obviously, because we want to get these parks up, because we recognize when we do, it's a huge benefit. I mean, I noticed yesterday, the little park, I can't remember what we call it, over by the 60 and Mesa Drive, what's it called?
City View.
City View, sorry, thank you. City View Park, I mean, it was just a, nothing, a vacant lot for years and years. Yesterday, it was full of kids, football team practicing, so we build it, and they do come. I mean, in every case, when we build a park, people show up, so.
And I guess because that is what ultimately is gonna play into us prioritizing these parks, right? And I don't know necessarily that we can reallocate funds from the bond dollars over to the O&amp;M side, right? So we can't do that, so, so I guess it's, it is a pretty heavy lift.
Thank you. Mr. Richards.
I think some of the, I think one of the ways that it could help to make this decision, I think maybe that we take, take the remaining projects and understand the, the maintenance costs associated with them, and could develop some kind of hierarchy and priority about how we start to, you know, drip those back into the system, and we have to, there's the fiscal portion of that, but I also think there's a regional priorities, you know, looking at the city, where do we have gaps? And, you know, so maybe a project on the west side and a project on the east side has an equal operating cost, but we have a gap on the east side, and we need to do that park sooner. And that's, I get that, that's fine, we can do that kind of priority, but, you know, making a decision off a spreadsheet's pretty tough, or off a presentation.
Because of PowerPoint, yeah.
PowerPoint is pretty tough, you know, but I think if we could get-
You want us to come back, maybe now, just showing the parks with the oper, the-
The remaining parks we have.
Do you have in a spreadsheet?
No, I mean, I can verbally tell you.
Well, would you like to see?
Yeah.
They're asking you to come back. Is that why you're, I don't want to read into it.
Yeah, it gives us some time to kind of think about it, but it's up to my colleagues, I mean, if they want to look at some stuff now, but I, you know, I think there's two things I want to understand. One, what's the operating cost? Two, where, is this park located in an area where we have a service gap? Do we not have a park here already? And if there's, you know, I think of the southeast corner, or up in Los Sendos area, or the central Mesa area around Alex. My district's doing pretty good for parks right now, and trails and all kinds of, we have some fun stuff going on. No, but I recognize there's gaps in other parks of the city, and so I think the thinking around the staff, looking at that cost constraint plus the gap, and how, what would bubble to the surface to do first when we have money?
I think we should also be able to, Mayor Council, we also probably need to include in there, as you noticed, that we've been pretty successful now in identifying federal funds for some of these projects. And once we get clear to use the federal funds, the next challenge is, they kind of have a short fuse, when they have to be spent, drawn down. So can we include that in the analysis also, because that also kind of pushes the timeline along a little bit, too?
Yeah, I mean, and if I had to choose, I'd choose park projects before, like even the museum project. And again, it's no knock on the museum itself, I love that quote, kind of cultural piece, but we have had gaps in open space for years, and if we could fill those, I mean, that's how I prioritize it. Obviously, my colleagues might have other things that they think about there in their priorities, and so it'll be, I think that'll just give us a framework, which to have a pretty robust discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Fenter.
The only perspective I would have from future budgeting, so you say, "Hey, a million dollars a year of new O&amp;M needs," and we spread it out 18 months or two years, you know, by the time we get these things built, we probably, if you look at the priorities, taking care of the city employees, these past priorities that we've done, public safety, the pensions, we used some creative financing there, got the employees taken care of with some. So it sounds like, honestly, this, because there was overwhelming support from the community, we need to move this up in the priority. So is it- So is it, you know, going to be a, I hate to call them bars because I just hate that term, but does this move up to a higher priority where we as a council say, hey, you know what, we need this O and M to get what the citizens asked us to do? So, you know, that, we're only going to be around one more, I think, one more budget cycle for some of us, but I, I would say that's a good way to look at it, too. I, I don't disregard, I mean, I don't disagree with Dave and I'd, I'd like the, the analytical approach to it. The, the only bad part of that is if your, if your project's on the end of this list, you know, we've gotten some amazing things done with Riverview and others. So now we're going to have to scrutinize the remaining ones, it just kind of gets that parochial part, you know, but he's being very fair about it and I appreciate that. You know, just kind of a, a way to look at it, but moving us in the right direction. You get, I hope you feel more than what I'm saying.
No, Mayor, Councilman, I think what you're also saying, though, is we have these parks identified, they've been identified, supported by the voters. As we go through the budget process, they need to rise to the top in our consideration for allocating dollars. That's what you're saying. So we can get that commitment to know your project's going to take place because the O and M will be there. And, and it becomes a priority in the budgeting process to make sure we have that allocation of O and M, is that?
Yeah. And as a follow-up, I would say the same voters that approved overwhelmingly, in District Two, approved this bond package versus West Mesa or wherever, have the same high expectation that we're going to get this done. So we're kind of stumbling. We've gotten some of these projects done, they're amazing projects, but if suddenly we say, well, you know what, we're going to, we're going to have to scratch yours, it, it doesn't sit well because they felt like, you know, we, that was our strategy is spread it throughout the city, be very fair and even, but if somehow they get, go through the scrutiny and they're not there, I think it kind of disdissolves.
No, we need to deliver. That's, that's a, that's a good point, absolutely.
Mr. Luna?
So, so Mark, as I look at the budget, is there any way that we can even tweak it a little bit more in terms of some amenities in those parks that may, perhaps we may not need as, you know, and I know that's a very sensitive question because everyone wants parks in their districts and want to, certainly want to appeal to, you know, certainly want to make sure the communities have access to those parks. And so I just, for example, I think of Eagle Park, you know, we're going to, we're going to hold on to the gymnasium, I believe. Is, is that something we really need? And, you know, maybe, maybe Councilmember Clever might want to weigh on this, but as, as you look through that, you know, is there something that you might want to tweak and look at? Well, you know, is this amenity that, that we really want to hold on to? And the other thing is, now in terms of Taylor Junior High, do we, is there a pool there that we're actually maintaining? So there's no pool there?
No.
Okay. And I know Fremont, there was a, there was a pool at Fremont, and is that part of this conversation? Okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, I, I like the idea of looking at it on a map so we, out of, you can see where the, the, the successful projects are and where the gaps are. As I look at the presentation, a couple of areas for, and, and I don't think anyone here is suggesting that we cancel any of these projects, we're just talking about how do we prioritize. There might be some that we need to slow walk and others that we can have the luxury of being able to green light and expedite. So that's the question. And I'd love to look at a map, that would help me come to that conclusion, but at the same time, the, the two projects that I saw potential for raiding money from, that's the wrong word to use, but that's what I'm going to call it, the 1.4 million out of Monterey. I mean, I, but that concerns me because I know Southeast Mesa is growing very fast and I'm, and I'm not sure that we have set aside enough park space in Southeast Mesa. I don't want to, 10 years from now, realize, oops, it's too late, you know, to have a nice park where we've got now a big chunk of our people living. On the other hand, if we've set that property aside and it is just a matter of slow walking it rather than eliminating it, that's one thing. And then we've got some great, excuse me, master planned communities out there, East Mark and others, and a big part of the amenities of those communities are these huge parks that are integrated into their, you know, their master plan. So I need to kind of be reminded and, and I think to some extent, they handed the keys to some of those parks over to us at the completion of, of the development. So I'm, I'm curious to know about Southeast Mesa. Do we, do we need to be sensitive to making sure that we're preserving enough park space out there or are we actually doing okay because the developers themselves have built some parks that we can take, take advantage of? The other, and I hate to say it, the, the 2.7 million for the, for the Mesa Historic Society, again, I'm not sure if that's a project that is ready to be green lighted or if it's one we can slow walk on and use that money for more urgent needs. I just, I'm, I'm interested in having that conversation. And the, the fact that Pioneer Park is an existing park, we're already doing the maintenance there and maybe the incremental cost of adding additional maintenance there is less of it hit to the budget than others, helps me think that perhaps we can move Pioneer Park up a little bit. That plus the fact that we've spent so much time and attention on the light rail and I think it's such a guaranteed success, I'd like to see that become another regional showcase park just because I think it's such a, it could happen so quickly and so easily. So those are my thoughts. But is it, Council, would it be fair to say that it's the consensus to ask staff to come back to us with a proposal for how we allocate the, the remaining money and how we address the, the issue of the lack of maintenance dollars and helping us prioritize how we move forward?
Or, yeah, can we just, yeah, we could do that. We could just, however, I think what I heard is you give us the, the parks, the incremental cost for maintenance, a map kind of showing their dispersion and kind of, you know, the, I think the biggest challenge we have right now is we, there's, there's several parks that have been significantly reduced over time. And so it's, it's how do we make them whole again or, and how do we do that? So, but we'll, we'll bring that discussion back, Mayor. I think what you're looking for is, what I heard is, the key issues are the, kind of the incremental costs, operating, O and M costs. What, what's the gap that we don't have identified today? We need to know what that looks like for each park, right? Kind of a map of where these parks are? What else do I need to get to you?
Locations.
Location, the maps?
And gaps.
Service gaps.
If there's inner service areas.
Oh, from the map, we could, we will include the new and the existing.
Is there a dark area without a regional park?
Okay. All right. We'll do that, we'll put that together.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Just a reaction to some of the comments. With regard to the Historical Museum, we've actually slow walked it for about 16 years because we acquired it in the late 1990s for the years under Museum of Natural History and a history museum. Historical Museum moved to change its facility in Lehigh to be a storage facility with the Natural History Museum and moved to a temporary exhibit space downtown. Historic preservation was a key priority element in the bond issue that Mesa voters approved. The projects on there were Buckhorn Bass and the, this, the federal building restoration. And so I think you need, we need to be cautious because trying to move construction costs away from the Historical Museum may help in acquiring property, but it doesn't help with O and M in terms of ongoing operations for, for the parks. And so I, I would just urge that we exercise caution there because there's been a lot of reliance based on voter approval for this and on city promises over many, many years to the, to the Historical Museum in terms of operating in the, in the, in the federal building. Remember, our original hope was we wanted, this council said we would like that building open when light rail opened, but that got deferred, construction stopped at, at that building. Construction has been going on at that building, understand, and went on hiatus about a year ago. So we have been, you know, on a plan there. So I just, you know, put it in mind, put it in, in context in terms of projects delayed, that's the one that's been delayed for almost two decades.
I, I don't disagree. And when we were at the, the light rail opening and we were all having a great time and I was there on the street and, and I noticed, wow, look at all the, the great facilities, all the great activities going on. And I looked up and here's this big, empty, really cool historic building. And I thought, what a shame that this building hasn't been activated yet because it's such a great historical asset that is primed to be a, a big part of our community. So please don't misconstrue, well, I, I'm not sure. I'd love to see that project go forward, but it's, these are tough decisions in prioritizing. Mr. Fenter?
Just to add, is there an opportunity for value engineering, my favorite term from Beth and others, to, you know, find that reasonable compromise and maybe it isn't this, but it's this or, you know, because I think a lot of these projects have been valued, valued engineered and some of them I, we didn't realize till after the fact. But there probably is an opportunity somewhere to find that right point without, I don't want to call it extravagant, but maybe some, where we get it open and running and then some future exterior improve, I don't know, there might be something there.
That's true, though. I mean, we got $3 million ready to spend on it right now and so maybe, can we get something out of that? Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. That's exactly what I was trying to say, is that we need to value engineer, we can look at all these projects and see if we can look and see what we can do for some cost savings.
Beth, do you have something to add to this?
Just in terms of the museum, we actually had a little higher budget initially, which we've pared down quite a bit. I think in terms of exhibits and things like that, we're going to go back and look at the exhibits and maybe, Cindy, did you have some things you wanted to add to this as well? Because we're working with our own staff as well to see what we can do to bring these costs down.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. I don't know, okay, it's a live mic. Good morning, Cindy Ornstein, Director of Arts and Culture for the city. I think it's important to keep in mind that the 3.1 million original allocation was purely for renovating the building shell and putting the most basic infrastructure into the building. There was nothing else in that budget. And of course, that budget was originally set six, that was from an estimate six years ago. There have been a lot of increases in construction costs since then. So you had those increasing construction costs, but then they realized that in order to bring it to fruition, there was additional infrastructure in the building that would have to go to support exhibitory. So it was not going to actually be able to move forward purely on a shell with, with basic infrastructure. So they added in those, that exhibitory infrastructure and there was also the need to differentiate the building on the street as something that was a destination. So they added some exterior facade elements to it. It is true, as Beth says, that the original budget, when they added those things, was significantly higher than it is now. Then they went and they did some value engineering to bring those costs down. I do believe that they feel they can potentially find some additional savings. I don't think they're huge, but I think there may be some additional small savings. But I think we should recognize that the 3.1 and the 5.4 are not apples to apples, they're apples to watermelon or pineapples. They're really quite different in the scope of the enhancements to the building that would be added for those dollars. It is not that the same things were included in those two budgets, they're significantly different.
So, but Mayor Council, then this is probably the one that creates the most difficulty in the context of identifying the operating cost also and how that, that's where we've had, we've had conversations with Historic Society about their responsibilities for the operations, but just speaking from, you know, some past experiences with museums, we, that, that's the uncertainty that probably makes it very, the unknown, is making sure that once we, this project would be completed, the sustainability over the long term and making sure that there is a plan in place that will ensure outside of city resources, the continuation of operations for this facility. And I, and I appreciate there are original budgets and things change. There are other park projects in here that had an original budget and it's less than today. Others that are more, but we've been able to get federal funding and everything like that. So it's, it's, you have a mixed, you know, quite a salad here of, of different things to look at. But I think what we get down to is the, it's that sustainability of these parks. We want to build parks that we can keep maintaining and showcase for our community because once, once we do that, they really are an amenity for our community.
Thank you. So again, the, the agenda item here was to provide direction and I just want to make sure that staff feels like we've done that.
We're going to come back with some more information, yeah.
Great. So we'll look, we'll have round two or actually it's probably like round 36 of this coming up. Yeah. And I'm, I'm not being critical. That's what we do is we prioritize money around here. So that's our role, so.
Did you have those comment cards?
I do, yes. The next, so that completes the staff presentation on Agenda Item 1A. There are a couple of folks that have asked to speak on this topic. Max Cox, would you like to come forward? Max, if you would do us the favor of just, yes, please, yeah, right there would be great. Just give us your name and your address, if you would please, and then you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts with us.
Max Cox, 3831 Clovis, Mesa. Been a lifelong, born and raised in Mesa. I'm here representing the Save Our Train Community Pioneer Park, continuing to rebuild. And we're always appreciative of all that the Parks and Recreation Department does. And it's, it's a huge job and, and it's amazing that it even functions with everything that goes, but it's, it's, you guys are doing great. The thing we're concerned about is continuing to basically, you know, economic engineering or, or making sure all the maintenance and things take care of the parks. And I think the thing that concerns us the most is that making sure the park maintains its flavor of the Pioneer Park and, and keeping it open to the public. I mean, when we, we go down there and we do, we, we brought an event down there called the Steel Rails and Rods Car Show. And we, we love it as an event park because it, it's central and people can come there and, and play and, and see what's going on. And we want to make sure that the train gets opened up again and becomes more of an icon or a, a display area of, you know, and central to the park that, you know, we've all, I don't know, I, I've played on the train and, and things like that. One of the things that we've been trying to continue to do is move the train forward out of its current position, is up to the front position off, off of Main Street, make it more of a display or a, a display area and a monument type of thing. So it becomes like an entrance into the park and, you know, have a, an area that kind of draws you into the park and makes it more of a, a place of inviting to come see what else is here. But that's, we've been doing this for, meeting over, you know, two or three times a month and, and continue to, to strategize and figure out how to get the train cleaned up and, and move it forward. And we, we're still here. So like I say, we're still appreciate all that you guys do and just looking for that. Historical stuff, we, we love historical stuff and it should be maintained, especially the Historical Museum, that needs to be, you know, finished. Any of the, the things that maintain our, our city history and, and preserves our, our pioneer heritage and, and where we came from, it makes a huge difference in, in the way people see who we are and, and keeping it going. I had one other, maintenance and, and running the parks and things like that. I, I don't know if you guys have ever discussed this before. One thing that came to my mind is we all get these little things called utility bills in our mail every month. Has it ever been discussed to put on a maintenance and, and parks maintenance fee or even a voluntary fee? Where they could like buy a park pass for a year and get special amenities through the, the museums and, and parks and things like that? I, I thought putting a, an extra optional thing on there, you know, you have hundreds of thousands of these bills going out every month, you know, just one more dollar a month from everybody would cover a lot of the fees that, of maintaining these parks. And I know this year, our family bought a, a swim pass. We thought, wow, that's a great pass, you know? And, and we ended up going three times, but the places we went were very crowded, well, Mesa High, which is a great place, I mean, that was a great presentation. But when we came out, people were still being turned away. And I think one of the pools that we were trying to go to before that, they were actually closed and I don't know why they're closed. It's probably because everybody was on, being signed to Mesa High to maintain the, the staff there. But I'm, I'm thinking if, if somehow there is a, a fee or an optional thing on their bill that people could put extra money towards the maintaining of the parks, they might feel a little more connected to the city and say that we're, we're keeping this together. Other than that, I, we just, we, we want to finish the job and make sure the park, Pioneer Park especially, maintains its flavor of its, its, its pioneer heritage. And we, we really believe that the train. And we, we really believe that the train was basically one of the first installments in the park when it was dedicated, and we want to make sure it stays there and, and turn it into a, a showcase type thing.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Thanks for your comments. It's difficult to have a lengthy give and take in this situation, but it's, would you please give my office a call? I'd love to sit down with your group and share my thoughts and hear from you, and we can point out scars from Pioneer Park trains to each other, so.
Yeah.
So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next is Antonio's. Are you here, Antonio's?
Yes.
And I'm going to do you the respect of not trying to pronounce your last name.
I understand that.
Would you please pronounce it for me?
It's Sontodakis.
Thank you, sir. And if, we could get your address, and we're anxious to hear from you for three minutes.
Located at 606 East Main Street. My business is called Haven Burgers.
Of course, I'm sorry, Tony, I recognize you now.
How you doing, sir?
Every city employee here has a warm spot in their heart for your business.
What my main concern was, I just came about, heard about where they want to put a converter and everything on the west side of the Pioneer Park. And they want to start putting lunch trucks there. My, my, I don't believe this is correct, because number one is, why should we be spending lunch, I mean, city money toward the lunch trucks? It's, it's, it doesn't, it's not fair for the city. That should be more, like he says, the train and others, other things for the city. Instead of just put more strain on other businesses in downtown Mesa. Why don't we instead of spending that money, putting those converters, those lights, all that, why don't we put it toward the city of Mesa, downtown Mesa, where the people actually need it? They went through three years, you asked us to, three years of construction to handle all this problem, and then now you guys want to put lunch trucks, more competition? Would it hurt my business? Probably not. But it might hurt somebody else's, and if it hurts one, that's one too many. And for it to put, you, we cut a million and a half, million and a half on the Pioneer Park, but we're going to invest a little bit more on the lights to put lunch trucks? How's that, how's that sound saying? That doesn't sound correct. Instead of putting that money toward the lunch trucks, let's put it to, like you said, move that train, put the train, put the, make it where people want to come to Pioneer Park. There's no reason people want to come to the lunch trucks. I mean, it's not going to hurt, it's going to hurt one or two, three businesses? It's not correct. I mean, we went through three years of construction, and we're still going to have another three years of construction afterwards when they, when they extended to Gilbert. You know? That's not, it's like, you're going to ask us continuous training, and then you're going to put more strain on our businesses? Mine, mangoes, everybody, sweetcakes, all this is people that have been here for three years. We suffered, and then you want to put converters, and you want to make a small business for them? Why? I don't see why. I don't understand. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, next item on our agenda is Item 1B, which is to hear a presentation. Thank you, Mr. Hirschberg, for your presentation. Item 1B, hear a presentation discussion, provide direction on an update of the bicycle and pedestrian pathway project. Lenny, good to have you with us, and by the way, thank you to the Transportation Department. I know you guys were very busy as a result of the storm damage this past week, so thank you to, to Lenny and the Transportation Department, and also obviously our police and fire for the great work you provided the last few days especially.
Thank you, Mayor, Member of Council, appreciate that. Yeah, a lot of light hours, and we're still working to this day. Henry Zs, myself, I'm Lenny Hume, Transportation Department Director. With me is Eric Adary, and our new Deputy Transportation Director, came aboard from the town of Gilbert in, in May, so he'll be talking more about the Bike and Ped Program that we're going to discuss. I'm going to give a short little introduction. Just as, as we have experienced in the last six months or more, the excitement about our bicycle and ped programs. We've got a lot of projects that are actively going on out there, a lot of community involvement. Our staff has been going out, meeting with staff, members of the community. Mayor eloquently said it several months ago, that the Bike and Ped Program is now our new golf courses. We have a lot of adult communities that are very interested in getting connectivity throughout the city of Mesa, and we're working towards that. We had, we have kind of four guidelines we use in our Bike and Ped Program to try to, to work through the program and identify what projects we need to do, and I really want to kind of highlight those, and I'll turn it over to Eric. First of all, we basically have our, if you remember, our City of Mesa Transportation Plan, the 2040 Plan, that just was adopted by Council. And then back in 2012, we have our Bike Master Plan, which we have identified projects, activities, things we want to do to maintain connectivity throughout the city of Mesa. Key focus we want to work on is provide access to the residents, and also provide access to destinations. Mr. Hirschberg talked about some of the parks that he's got going on, and how we're trying to connect, connectivity to these parks and have routes that we have places to go, not just a place to, to ride down a trail. We also want to provide access that doesn't have a lot of conflict with the traveling public vehicles, other things. We want to be able to kind of keep it off the side, but also maintain that whole idea of having a complete street program, where you have, again, the connectivity. And then really finalize, use existing right-of-way that we have, so we don't have tremendous amount of cost and acquisition of right-of-way and use, and kind of gets back to that value engineering of how we try to put our program together. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric, he's going to go through each one of the kind of projects we've got going on and break the cities up. There's a lot of information on the first map, and we'll break it up, maps below.
Thank you, Lenny. Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you. As, I was in Gilbert for five years, it took me two years to learn to say town. Hopefully after three months, I apologize if it slips in there. But I think I, I know city again, so. But I'm, I'm really excited to be here, and I'm really excited about the Bike and Ped Program that, that's been going on and is going on here, that there's a lot of support for it. We have great staff that has, has put together the, the two master plan documents that Lenny talked about. They are also out meeting with, with residents continually at, at city activities. We had a booth at the Light Rail opening. We have quite a few activities planned for this fall and, and winter, to be able to get the public's input on, on the Bike and Ped Trail Program, where those are important. And with that input, our priorities shift. We have these master plans, but, but as new opportunities arise, we're looking at those and trying to incorporate that into, to our plan. I just want to, we'll start off here with a map of all of Mesa, and really kind of pointing out what the ultimate goal is. This is a, you know, 10, 20, 30-year plan to get all these, these trails in place. Currently, as constructed, as an official bike path, we, we have this path along the Consolidated Canal that starts at baseline and ends up at, at Center Street. I want to point out, along our other canals in the city, people are utilizing those, they're, they're open for access, there's just not a official path or officially city-maintained path there. SRP does keep maintenance roads that are paved, but they may not quite be up to what we need for standards for an official city designation. What we've tried to do is outline in red the projects that are going to be complete in the next five years that we have funding for, they're really the, the projects that were talked about in, in the parks presentation, we'll get into those a little bit more. We have solid green lines here on the map, here kind of in the north Mesa section, as far as, these are projects that we're hearing should be high priority, we're really looking into and studying, but aren't funded yet. Also, along the, the 202 section down here in southeast Mesa, and along the eastern canal, kind of through the, the central part of Mesa. All the other lines are dashed green lines, those are, we're looking at, you know, planning for those and, and really looking at those in the, the next, you know, more than five years, but those are unfunded also. Just to bring up to your attention, the next council meeting on September 14th, we'll be bringing forward three projects to apply for federal funding for. MAG has released some federal funding for the Transportation Alternatives pot of money, which Bike and Bicycle and Pedestrian Program falls under. Those projects that we'll be bringing forward are here, the, the South Canal connection, and then also along the Loop 202 here in the southeast section of, of Mesa, so look forward to that.
Before he leaves, that, there's also another item in there requesting, a, a agenda item that talks about a street sweeper. Obviously, you talk about O and M, we're trying to get a grant to buy a street sweeper to maintain these, these facilities once we get them, it gets back to the, the whole principle of O and M and trying to find some other ways of funding those types of activities.
I'm sorry, the, the street sweeper for bike paths and canal?
Yes.
Oh, so, okay. So it's not your normal street sweeper, this is?
Well, the, the bike paths are, are wide, but a big sweeper like that through that areas are very difficult to maneuver, so we're looking at a smaller one that's, that's more specific for that. But we also can use it in other areas where we have tight radiuses in our normal city activities, so it'd be, it'd be a shared use.
Interesting, okay.
As Lenny mentioned, really, we're looking at trying to connect and pride, provide connections for, for all residents throughout the, the city, and, you know, the ultimate goal is to provide really a loop and then connections to that loop around Mesa. I'm going to move to, to some more specific areas in, in the city where the Bike and Ped Program and, and trails are either being designed and constructed, or there, there's some movement, just to give an update on. The first section is in the northwest part of Mesa. Currently, we have two different projects that are either under design or under construction, or, or will be under construction, it hasn't started yet. The first is the Rio Salado Pathway. Tempe actually just completed their section of the Rio Salado Pathway, and it ends right underneath the 102, 101 and 202 interchange. This fall, we'll be starting our section as far as construction goes, we have federal money to do that, and I think they're tying up the last of the loose ends, and we'll be able to start construction. The first section of it will connect to the, to Tempe, and, and then also will connect down into Riverview Park and, and the Cubs Spring Training Facility. There's a second, second section that, that will be constructed a few months after that, that will connect it all the way over to Dobson Road. To connect to that section, that, that leaves this gap, this kind of, this, this red line here, the West Mesa Connector, which is currently where, where we've started design, and it's an interesting project. Up until now, we have all of our bike and pedestrian paths, except, you know, our bike lanes and, and such are on really canal systems or some sort of right-of-way. The West Mesa Connector, Connector is going to be a combination of going along canals. It's also, we're going to be taking lanes from both Alma School Road and Country Club Drive, we're going to take one lane and create a bicycle track. I have picture, you know, potential picture of what that'll look like. And we're also going to be going through on, on 10th Street, and that'll be a, a shared use facility where the bicycles will be, be riding with traffic. Before I get off this slide, then, some of the other things we're really looking at is providing a trail along this section of the canal behind Riverview. This will give us the opportunity to be able to create a loop around the Riverview area, be able to hold, you know, 5K events or, or different types of running or events there if desired. So here are just, this is the same map area, but we've, we've pulled some pictures in, just here on, on the left side is, this is the end of the Tempe path, right underneath the 202 and 101 interchange, this is where the Rio Salado Path will, will pick up. To the far right is the connection to our, to our existing Consolidated Canal Trail, where the West Mesa Connector will, will pick up, and we're hoping to go to construction for the West Mesa Connector next year. And the, the picture on the top here is, is a, a rendering of, of what Country Club Drive will look like. We've taken a lane of southbound traffic, and we are, we're going to have a, we're going to have a separated bike lane with curb, with, with a median separating the, the traffic and two-way bike lane on one side. Next area I'm going to go to is the southeast section of Mesa, and we've been working with ADOT, we've been meeting with ADOT over the, the last six months on this section and the next section. I think ADOT's getting, may, may just start to think, all we want to do is come to talk to them about Bike and Ped Projects, but they've been really helpful, because we're, we're looking at using their right-of-way for, for the pass to save, save cost on, on these. We have one current project from, along the Loop 202, from baseline to Elliot Road, and also along, there, there's a power line alignment that we are going to go to design, starting at the end of this year. And, and we've been working with ADOT on, on that alignment. There's been some tricky locations where it's really narrow with, with their existing utilities, but I think we've got everything worked out. Our, what we're really going to focus on in the future with this is, is not only the, the connection of the path along the 202, but then also, how do we get it into all the existing neighborhoods in the southeast section of Mesa? And how do we, how can we connect it to ASU Polytech? How can we connect these facilities into East Mark and, and other locations?
Just to add to that, Mr. Hirschberg mentioned the park, the park at Signal Buton Elliot, and again, we're trying to get that connection, the Augusta Ranch area, the whole area, trying to get those connections in the neighborhood to get back onto that facility, use the neighborhood streets as best we can, and tie everything back in to use the, the network around the outside loop.
And then, just a few pictures here, this is the existing RWCD Canal, that in a lot of locations in the city can be used. At some locations, it's fenced off. The picture on the bottom left is the connection Gilbert has completed, the, this section of their 202 bike path, where we would be connecting a power road. And then these two pictures on the right are the connection from the 202 over, over to the power line alignment. Final section that we'd like to highlight, that there's been a lot of movement on in the, in the past few months, I think my first day here, I got dragged into a meeting about this, is really the, the north part of Mesa, and connecting what we're doing around the Riverview area and West Mesa Connector, how do we get it further east, further north? We've heard, you know, there, there's a lot of desire to be able to connect all the way up to, to the Granite Reef Dam and connect out east. And so we've, we've had a lot of discussions. As I mentioned, you know, we're, the South Canal Shared Use Path, we're only showing part of it here, but this is a, this is a very important connection to get down to our existing facilities, to connect it to West Mesa, and even South Mesa, to get to, to baseline, to, to have those facilities. We've had quite a few discussions with ADOT regarding this Lehigh, Lehigh Falls Loop Shared, Shared Use Path, and we've, we've worked out an alignment with them, we're, we're working on an agreement also with them to use their construction site, where they have a few trailers at Valvist and the 202, they're going to turn that over to us after they're done with all, all the construction on the 202, and we're going to use that as a parking lot and trailhead to be able to access the, the Lehigh Falls Monument. So there, there's a lot of movement there. And then, you know, looking at these regional connections and to try to get up to Granite Reef Dam, we have this as, as more than five years, you know, even though we've heard that, that it's something that's wanted to be done, we have to work with multiple agencies to, to get all the way there, and, and that may take some time. And just a, a few pictures and, and highlights here, really at, where Lehigh Road comes in at McDowell, there's the Lehigh Falls, the, the trail will, will come by this location, there's actually an underpass under McDowell Road at this location, but, but an opportunity to really make this a, a more attractive area and a destination for, for people to come. And as I mentioned, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, with this, this trail system, be able to get to the Lehigh Crossing Monument, that kind of just sits out in the middle of nowhere right now, and there's, there's a few tracks there, but, but we want to make an official path there. With that, that's the end of our presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any more detail if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Fenter.
Just quickly, I know we're tight on time, huge supporter. In fact, I didn't start out that way. I have learned that these trails are linear parks. It is the new way, I love that term, the new way of, not new way, I, I would say that multiple generations, the millennials, everybody loved this, get lots of feedback. I see 40 elderly people all dressed the same with their flags going down those bike paths now, and they love it, their, their joy on their face, and it's a safe way to do things, so I love the safety.
I recognize you too.
Yeah, I will be there. My little three-wheeler, throw a little, yeah, something back, but now, big supporter, and I, whatever we can do to, and I remember the old days, the mayor's first time and I, whatever we can do to, and I remember the old days, the mayor's first time around about the discussion on the Lehigh thing, what a gorgeous area to ride and run and bike, and so, you know, getting our federal tax dollars back to us to support that development out there, great move.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, this is the future park bond to me. I mean, I think, for those who haven't been, you can, the trail system out in the northeast part of town is fabulous, but it's undeveloped still. You literally can go all the way out to the Granite Reef Dam if you start at Gilbert Road, there's only, and you want to take a long bike or run, you can run from Gilbert Road to the Granite Reef Dam, it's six and a half miles, and you'll only intersect traffic one time at Val Vista. So it's very unique, very pristine desert, you look like you could look, reach out and touch Red Mountain from this trail, it's just gorgeous. So that's a great city resource that has yet to be developed, and, you know, councils and mayors years from now will be making this happen, but it's important that at this stage that we lay the groundwork for it so that it can happen. So thank you for the presentation, I agree, this is, this is our future when it comes to developing, this is what the public wants. They don't want golf courses as much as they used to, they want to get out and break a sweat on their bike or hiking up the mountain, so.
Just to add to it, Mayor, we've been, obviously, got a lot of requests for having events too. You mentioned some of the five mile, trying to get mileage where we can get some type of bike event or some type of running event. I know you run marathons, we've been looking at trying to get something set up where we don't have a lot of conflicts with the traveling public. If we can get that connection out to Granite Reef, that might be an opportunity around the Loop 202 all the way around where we don't have the conflicts with the vehicular traffic as much, and we can get a big events, big events out here, we're really focusing on that too.
Well, and one thing you said that really kind of struck home with me, I know that we don't have any money in our budget right now to do a lot of this stuff, but it seems like between the SRP aesthetics funds that we get a portion of and the MAG funding, other federal funding, and I know you're doing this, but that might be the one way that we can kind of accelerate this a little bit, is to use other people's money to do this. So I'm interested in hearing as much about that as you can help us with. And then, right now, we're doing 5Ks out of Riverview, and Mr. Hirschberg, if he's still in the room, I think he'll tell you that that books as quickly as possible. So there's a, there is a real pent-up demand for access to those types of amenities. But thank you, Council, any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much, gentlemen, good presentation. The next item on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share? Next item on our agenda then is scheduling of meetings and general information, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, Motorcycles on Main is back this Friday, September 4th, from 6:00 to 10:00 in downtown Mesa. All motorcycles, there will be, in addition to the motorcycles, there'll be live music, food, and vendors, and we just ask everybody to know that there are light rail trains running up and down Main, so we'll be very careful with that. This Sunday, September 6th, the Arizona Museum for Natural History will be having a free admission Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00. So invite everybody out there. And then, our next study session will be Thursday, September 10th, at 7:30 a.m. here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Just one other little plug for Eastmark, they're reconvening, they're starting this Friday, they do their first Friday concerts out at Eastmark's pre-concert. This Friday, it's a country band called Georgia Chrome.
Thank you. Speaking of first Fridays, Mr.
We're going to have a food, food truck event over at La Sendas, I think it's at the Trailhead Park, so if you feel like going to La Sendas and eating some great food, I would welcome all of you, it starts at 5:00 p.m. This Friday.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to move into an executive session, so I would entertain a motion to that effect. Thank you, moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, we are now in executive session.